Please turn me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mike, roll call please, Buffy.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Lucy.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you. We have some proclamations and presentations tonight. On our first one is National Mentoring Month. And this is in recognition and support of National Mentoring Month, January 2022. Whereas this year, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the North Coast, Casa of Humboldt, and Boys and Girls Club of Redwood celebrate the 137 combined years of service provided to the youth in Humboldt County. Together, it is recognized that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. And whereas a mentor is a caring, consistent presence who devotes time to helping young persons develop personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choice, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. And whereas research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. And whereas youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And whereas our community has a number of community volunteers, teachers, advocates, and many others who support the mentoring movement and work selflessly to improve our children's Oscar success. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Fortuna hereby recognizes January 2022 as National Mentoring Month, and thanks all of our local heroes for participating in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The City Council also calls on residents to help close the gap between the availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who want to spend time with a big brother, big sister, Casa Advocate, or Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods mentor. Signed the 18th day in the City of Fortuna by Mr. Long, Mayor. And I believe Michael Kine is going to accept this proclamation on behalf of Big Brothers and Big Sisters and these other groups. And Michael, if you would like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor Long. I would like to say thank you to the city for having us here in the Yar River Valley and in the community. And I'd also like to do a quick shout out to some of our local supportive funders such as the Quanis Club in Kent, in particular Denise over at the McLean Foundation, of course, the Fortuna Chamber of Commerce, and also Heather, who's been one of our greatest fundraisers over at Starbucks here in Fortuna over at the Strongest Creeks Plaza. So thank you so much for all that you do for our community, and we look forward to working in the Yar River Valley and expanding and working with our mentors and also our kids.
All right. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate you being here. Our next item is introduction of the new facility custodian Lucretia. Whoever introduces or can help me with the last name.
I'll go ahead and introduce her. Thanks, Mayor Long. This is Cameron Mall, the Parks and Recreation Director. So I wanted to introduce Lucretia Prabhu. She is our new facility custodian. And as most of you know, we were without a full-time facility custodian for quite some time, trying to manage part-timers and trying to manage a cleaning service. So we came back to the desire to want to bring someone on who could be consistent. And that person is Lucretia. And so far, she's proven herself to be a very diligent and detail-oriented employee. She started in mid-November, and she comes to us with previous experience, including janitorial duties at some other local businesses. And I've heard a lot of great things from other departments at this point about how great of a job she's doing and want to keep that rolling. Just keep in mind, this position is actually new to the Parks Department. This position used to be under the General Services Department. So now this is the first time we are operating with this this new full-time position. So glad to have Lucretia here. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to her. I know she wants to say a few items. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, there.
I just wanted to say thank you very much, you guys, for giving me the opportunity to be part of the city. I am absolutely in love with my job. All my coworkers are amazing. I've had nothing but a positive experience since I've started.
Good to welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Do we have Erica on here?
Yes, I just let her in.
Okay, I looked a minute ago and she wasn't there. Hi, Erica. So this next recognition is to recognize Erica Thompson's service on the Fortuna Business Improvement District's Board of Directors. And we have a certificate of recognition that says the City Council of the City of Fortuna awards this certificate to Eric Thompson. The city expresses our sincere thanks and gratitude for your 10 years of dedicated service to the Fortuna Business Improvement District. The city commends your outstanding contributions and commitment to Fortuna's business community. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in all your endeavors. Signed 18th day of January and witness thereof by Mayor Su Long. So I get to sign it and I'll get it to you, Erica, but on behalf of the entire council, we're just very grateful for your dedication to the city and the Fortuna Business Improvement District. And we know you're going to be involved somehow.
Thank you very much, Mayor Long and Honorable Counsel. I sure appreciate it. And I just will give a shout out real quick. Anybody who's looking to get involved in the city and the business community, FBIT is a wonderful way to do that and is a great opportunity to really kind of get your feet wet in how the city things work and support good people that work hard. So thank you so much for your time and thank you so much for the certificate. I was not expecting it. Have a great night, you guys.
All right. Thanks, Erica. Our next presentation is from our Measure E Chair, Walt Wilson.
Is Walt on here?
Yep.
Walt, we're not hearing you. You might need to unmute.
I thought I did. Am I on off?
Far. Now we can hear you.
Actually, I was looking for a photograph and I'm not seeing it, so I'll just go ahead, I guess. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. Thank you for providing us this opportunity to address you this evening. I am here with Bill Hardcastle. We represent the Measure E Oversight Committee. Joe is Vice Chair. I am Chair. I don't see Joe either, but I know he's on. As you know, the Oversight Committee strives to adhere to the duties and responsibilities set forth in the council resolution establishing the committee and to use majorly funds as transparently and as efficiently as possible. The COVID-19 pandemic has made it difficult for the committee to conduct business in a normal manner. And we thank each committee member for their many contributions during this past year. We also thank our city advisors for their necessary invaluable assistance and guidance. And that is Finance Director Erin Selmy, City Manager Merrick Perry, Deputy City Clerk Buffy Gray, and many others. Please refer to the Measure E Revenue and Expenditures documents contained in your council packet for available details on fiscal year 2020-21. The Oversight Committee is satisfied that all Measure E funds are being utilized in accordance with the spirit and intent of the ballot measure. The committee thanks the council and city staff for their hard work on behalf of the citizens of Fortuna. This will conclude our presentation, and Joe and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Walt. Does any member of the council have any comments or questions?
I just want to make a quick comment. If I could. I just would like to let the committee know, though, Measure E Oversight Committee know, just from me personally, as well as probably the council, but we really appreciate the work, the effort that you folks put into being on this committee. This report is excellent. Going through it, it's concise. And we really appreciate you folks being there. And thank you, Walt, for heading up this committee.
Thank you.
I would just like to quickly give the public a rundown on who the committee members are. So as Walt shared, he is the Chair. Joseph Hardcastle is the Vice Chair. And then we have Mrs. Chris Mobley, Donnie and Grim, Debbie August, Martin Morris, and Tina Taylor. And they're just all doing a fantastic job, and they really put a lot of thought into their decisions. So I just appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, real quickly. Walt, if I'm not mistaken, you have a public input meeting tomorrow night for ideas for future projects for Measure E. If that's true, I'd just like to invite the public to participate.
That's true.
It starts at 5:30, is that correct?
Yes, 5:30.
Okay.
And I just wanted to say that I appreciate the work that the committee puts in, and I often get questions from people and how to have input. And I tell them to go to the next meeting, which is tomorrow. But I also say that we have the committee that ensures that the money is spent in the intent of the tax measure and that the public is invited to bring input to it. So we're looking to be as transparent as possible, and we appreciate the public's input. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Walt. We'll move on to oral comments from the public. There is a number on your screen if you would like to comment. And if you are on our call, you can raise your hand and we will get to you. While we're waiting to see if anyone calls in, we do have 10 items on our consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull anything? Seeing none, someone want to make a motion?
Actually, I apologize, late to the party. Can I pull reported dispersments, please?
Yes. So I, anyone else? Okay, Jeremy.
Okay, on page eight of 14, there was an item regarding the Cascade Drilling, which made sense up until the last one for City Hall Pest Service.
I already emailed Aaron on that one, too.
Yes. So just to address that, Councilmember Stanfield, that was an input error. So it is all for Well 5 and not for Pest Services. So thanks for pointing that out in this clarification. That was all for Well 5.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Buffy?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right. Our first City Council business item is to authorize supplemental budget requests and the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the First Five Humboldt to receive funding for a playgroup program.
Thanks, Cameron Mall. Our Parks Director will be providing the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Merritt. Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. I'm really excited about this agenda item. In particular, I think it's really in alignment with the proclamation tonight for the National Mentoring Month. So currently, our Recreation Division does not offer any programs for children under four. And so I thought that it would be a great idea to try to explore being able to start a program to be able to provide this service to the public. And so I thought about what, you know, how about starting a playgroup? And what a playgroup is essentially is a space for, to facilitate social interactions. Positive learning experience is for newborn, newborn to five-year-olds and their families. And these programs really are not only for children, but for parents as well. Parents also, you know, we know that raising children can be quite difficult. So it's also a positive space for parents who need some support and networking. And so I've had some previous experience and observation and all the positive outcomes that have come through playgroups. They, you know, have proven to prepare children better for kindergarten, also reduce what are called Aces at Hearst Childhood Experiences and just create for a really positive environment for children to play and for families to network. So the problem was we needed some funding to support a program of this nature. So I reached out to First Five Humboldt, who provides programs and services for families with children ages newborn to five years old to help us try to facilitate such a program and pay for the staffing and the supplies that would come with that program because we do have such a small budget for the Recreation Division. So I submitted an application to First Five Humboldt and it was approved. And to keep and find a little bit of background on First Five, they are a state-run agency. They collect their taxes from tobacco taxes, California tobacco taxes. And then those funds are then allocated to the different counties. So ours is First Five Humboldt. So I submitted the application to them. It was approved in order to provide a playgroup for families twice a week, Thursdays and Sundays. And so what the agreement that you see here as an attachment would approve funding in order to support that program. So essentially, it would be $14,000 of annual funding added into the recreation budget to support the cost needed for the extra staffing, which would be two facilitators to run each program, plus the materials and supplies needed to run the program. So for the SBR that you see, there'd be $14,000 going in revenue-wise, $12,000 in expenses for staffing, $2,000 in expenses for supplies. I got some good news from First Five last week in that they were willing to pay up to $3,000 worth of additional funding for materials and supplies to get our program started as a one-time cost. So we're really excited to be able to have this opportunity, potentially start this program. So my recommendation and action on this item is to approve the agreement with First Five Humboldt and approve the SBR to adjust the annual budget to include this new program. And I'm happy to answer any questions that City Council or any others might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. And before we ask questions for Cameron, Buffy, can you note that we closed public comment? I forgot that. All right. Any questions or comments for Cameron regarding First Five?
I would just say that this is one of the, one of the things that we really is an offering to the public, and it's something that's needed and will provide a place for the younger kids to come and interact and prepare themselves for school when it comes around. And this is the kind of thing that we should take advantage of, and I commend Cameron for reaching out like that. So thank you.
Mike, Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cameron, just for clarification, so we will be having $14,000 coming in from First Five and then $14,000 going to the program from our revenues, correct?
Yeah, no, the $14,000 would be from First Five to support the program. The expenses would also be $14,000, so $12,000 in staffing costs and then approximately $2,000 in supplies and materials to operate the program.
So it's a wash at this point, and then plus the $3,000 that they're going to or be willing to provide for additional equipment or whatever supplies.
That's correct.
Perfect. Very nice program. Thank you.
Jeremy.
Muted.
Jeremy, you're still muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Cameron, thank you so much for applying for the grant and getting this going. It's greatly appreciated. Is this an annual request renewal or is this a five-year program or what?
It's, it's an annual request review. So the commissioners for the First Five will get together every year and then they'll allocate funds to the certain departments. So as long as we're performing at a higher level, then there's no reason why we wouldn't get funded on an annual basis. The funds are reimbursed, so we do have to submit quarterly invoices essentially to First Five, and then they reimburse us the funds.
Okay, thank you.
I will note that there could be some additional revenue that would come in. We haven't decided yet. You know, we want to offer it as a free program to the public, but we also would offer a suggested donation. So if anyone feels willing, they can make a donation, which would also go into revenue. So there potentially would be more revenue besides the $14,000 from First Five. There could be some participant revenue as a suggested donation to support the program.
As long as that doesn't make people feel like they shouldn't show up if they can't pay.
It's free. It's a free program, and it's just, it's just a suggestion. So we will not turn anyone away if they don't want to pay.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. Who's going to be in charge of that playgroup?
So between myself and the Recreation Supervisor, we would oversee the program, and then we would have at least two playgroup facilitators is what they're called. And those would be the part-time staff who would help run and operate the program on Thursdays and Sundays. But it would be overseen or directed or managed by myself and the Recreation Program Supervisor.
And how likely are you able to get part-timers to do that?
We currently have part-timers that are interested in doing that. So we could potentially use staff that we already have hired that could, that could take that over. However, I will be recruiting for some other previous or current playgroup facilitators from other programs.
Mike Johnson.
So what would you anticipate your hours being and what do you anticipate the start date?
Start date is kind of up in the air because right now there are no playgroups being offered due to the pandemic. So we kind of have to just wait and see how the pandemic unfolds. However, right now is a good time to do that planning. So we have some time until we're, we can safely open to do some of that planning for the program. So when it does start, we're ready to go and we can roll it out seamlessly. And then, sorry, what was your other question, Mike?
About what you thought the anticipated hours might be.
Thank you. So ours would be Thursdays and Sundays. We've got it right now, I believe, from 10:00 to 1:30, 10:00 AM to 1:30.
And so we'll have the funding. Once the things calm down somewhat and we can offer it, we'll be ready to roll.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else with comments or questions for Cameron? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Should have asked that earlier. I don't see anyone raising their hand that's on our call. So Buffy, if someone calls in, give me attention.
Okay.
So if we don't have any more questions, we can go ahead with a motion. If somebody does call in, we'll grab them, but we don't have a lot of participation on our call-in thing, so.
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to approve the supplemental budget request and to authorize city staff to execute an agreement with First Five Humboldt to offer a playground, playgroup activity for one year.
A second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Buffy?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucy?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Cameron. Our next item is a supplemental budget request to use American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for the server updates necessarily, necessary to implement Tyler Technology software for the Community Development Department. So I'm going to turn off my video and my sound, and Tammy's going to take this item since my business is part of the community development for Fortuna. So Tammy, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Do we have a staff report?
Yeah, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Trent, before I hand it to Liz Shori, our Deputy Director of Community Development, I just wanted to remind the council that this item was brought to them once before and with the request to get some feedback from the building community on willingness to pay and use the software. So this is the second time that you'll have seen this item. It was asked to be brought back. And so Liz will be providing the staff report and giving you some of the results of that, the survey to do with our builders.
Yeah, so thank you, Merritt, and Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm going to go ahead and share a PowerPoint. Will be fairly brief. Okay, so, um, let's see, I started at the top. So yeah, this is a supplemental budget request for the planning and building software. And it's to use the American Rescue Plan funds and the amount of $80,230 for licensing and server upgrades. And so there's really two benefits or two components to the planning and building software. One is that it would create a public online portal where builders or homeowners, whoever's doing a project, can do everything, you know, remotely. So that includes submitting applications, having those reviewed and commented on and issued, making payments, checking their permit status. So the software will automatically update permit status, and there will be, you know, a place for people to remotely check on their status and to communicate with, you know, the building inspector or the reviewers. Builders can schedule inspections online and print permits online. So pretty much everything can be done remotely. And then the permitting management software that is on the internal staff side. Everything is, you know, fairly automatic in that regard. It streamlines the internal processes by really reducing the amount of different kinds of tracking and programs that we have to enter data into and, you know, manage the data and communicate, you know, through each step of the way. We use, right now, we use different programs for different purposes, for data storage and communications and, you know, creating documents and things like that. And it really actually is, you know, a bit cumbersome for, for, you know, for the amount of people that are working on it and the types of communication and the types of product. And so it allows us then to track the permit approvals automatically. It'll give us updates and it will let us see, you know, instantly where a permit is in the process and who, maybe who needs to follow up, who, you know, there's some accountability there because it lets us see, you know, who maybe who hasn't responded. So it tracks the dates and the types of approvals or whether, you know, something has been sent back to the applicant. So it pretty much lets us check those things instantly, and that reduces a lot of time and, you know, opening programs and emails and things like that. So that coordinates department reviews. It can, it will allow remote data entry for inspections. So an inspector's out in the field and, you know, they can, instead of doing the handwritten card, they can do an electronic inspection and put their, put the permit status in their notes. It'll be automatically saved in a, you know, in a certain file. And then, and then issuing permits. So it's really going to streamline for the public, you know, and the benefits to the public. In addition to being able to do things remotely, and that's, you know, that's really the way communication is done nowadays for a lot of things. And it also will benefit people who may not be able to come to the office. So, you know, it could be an office manager for a builder who, you know, has accessibility issues and finds it hard to get to City Hall, so they have to send somebody else, or, you know, it may be difficult for them to come in and pick up a permit. They can do that remotely. You know, maybe the, you know, the builder, maybe the builder's spouse is the one who processes the paperwork and, you know, they have accessibility issues. So, you know, in addition to just streamlining it and allowing remote, remote access, you know, there's also, you know, accessibility and just, and the COVID. You know, really, this is tied to the American Rescue Plan Act funds because of COVID and reducing, you know, personal contact, personal interaction. you know, personal contact, personal interactions, but there's other health issues that benefit the public as well. So, you know, overall, and this is really the way communication and data management goes nowadays. So it's really bringing us up to kind of the modern standard and just facilitating a lot of communication. So the cost breakdown for the software, we did issue proposals to three different contracting firms. And this is the one they did negotiate with us, bringing the cost down comparable to the other couple of other agencies or firms. This is the one, Tyler Software is the one that we felt was, you know, the, the most responsive and also, you know, providing a good product and also able to work with the finance department, you know, with their, with their Tyler software. So it'll be seamless interaction on their part as far as taking payments. So that, that was a significant benefit to this as well. And then, so I just, let me go back here. So the licensing and training fifty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty and the, plus the server upgrades of twenty-five thousand. And those would be paid for with the, the ARPA funds. So that would be eighty thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, which is in the motion in the staff report. And then the annual maintenance cost isn't technically part of this approval because this would be, you know, from the general fund or, you know, not tied to an SBR, this SBR. And the annual maintenance cost would be fourteen thousand dollars. And the potential funding for that is, so there would be the initial purchase of the hardware and the licensing and training from the ARPA funds. And then the annual fee of fourteen thousand dollars would be, could be reimbursed by five percent, it's actually five, five percent technology fee. And that would be placed on building permits. So that would be over the counter permits. And, you know, all the way up front to a single family and commercial building permits in a range of approximately five dollars on small permits, approximately two hundred dollars for single family residential permits. And if you have two hundred and seventy-five on, you know, an average new commercial project and that would generate the fourteen thousand. This would be, I mean, it can be considered tonight. It should be considered because it, you know, it would be a long, an ongoing cost to the city. But it would be collected or it would be established on the annual fee schedule. So, oh, and then the other thing that Merritt mentioned, we did do a builder survey. We sent twenty-eight, we sent the survey to twenty-eight local builders. And the questions that we sent out were on the included in our staff report. What we gave you is the summary of the survey results. And then a list of the questions that were asked. And so each of the ser, each of the respondents, we received twelve responses out of the twenty-eight that we sent. And the responses were generally positive, slightly higher than fifty percent for the most part. The nine response, nine respondents out of the twelve were in favor of an online portal or an email with digital building plans. So that would be submittal of building plans instead of the paper. So that saves them money and printing and delivering them. Nine respondents were in favor of an online portal. I'm sorry, eight were in support of receiving a permit from an online portal. Eight were in support of a payment online and six were supportive paying the fee for the service. That's fifty percent of the respondents. And seven felt that an online printing portal would have a positive effect on their business. So, you know, it's slightly higher than fifty percent. And then I would add that the other jurisdictions do have online, an online permitting software. And they do charge a technology fee to fund the ongoing costs. So that includes Arcata, Eureka and the county. So a lot of the builders are familiar with, you know, that service. That's probably why we did receive slightly higher than fifty percent. These builders were all local, so we did get the names and addresses from the cities, you know, the permit list. These are the common, common, common builders within the get issued permits. So the recommendation is to approve an SBR to use the American Rescue Plan Act funds for Tyler Technologies and server upgrades necessary to implement that. And I will pass that back to the council.
Thank you, Liz. Doing, does any of the council have any questions for Liz?
I have a few.
Go ahead.
If you can go back to slide number two for me. My first question came along the lines of, you know, these, this technology is only as good as the person using it, right? I mean, a lot of times. So is, in that training, what does that include with your onsite? Remote data entry for inspections? Are we going to be issuing the building department iPads? So that they're doing that work right on site? Is the public going to be able to see every application or just somebody who's logged into the exact portal?
So I know that for the, that last question, well, I'll answer both. Yeah, it would be through a tablet. So the building department would have tablets to do that. And the training, I know that the, I can't say specifically what, you know, the level and degree and amount, the hours of training that the finance department received. But I know that it was, it was extensive. It was complete. You know, I know from, just from observing that, you know, the trainers were here for an appropriate amount of time. And I know that there was follow-up and, and speaking with Aaron, he was really satisfied with the level of training and the, and the follow-up. There's continuing to be follow-up and that's part of the annual fee is, you know, updating forms when needed, you know, just troubleshooting and training when things get updated. And then what can be seen on the online portal? I don't remember specifically for this. I know for the county, you can go to their online portal and see what permits are active or you can see all of the permits that have been issued online, you know, that are tracked online. And I think that data is limited to, you know, just the basic, the applicant, the address, this, and the status for the, for the general public. So the applicant themselves can see, you know, basically the project file and actually anyone can request to see a project file because it is a public document. So not everything needs to be put online. So it would just be really the basic information for the general public. And then, you know, and that would help, you know, a neighbor might be interested in some activity that's going on adjacent to them and they can look up to see what type of a permit it is and what the status is. And then again, the applicant will be able to see more detailed, you know, the details of the, say, the permit inspections.
So will it require you or your staff to go in on a regular basis to see the status update of a project that's going through the different departments? Or will there be like, if it sits there for three days, will there be an automated reminder email to whoever's desk it's sitting on?
Yeah, absolutely. There will be an automatic issuance when, when a permit. So when, when anyone responds, I mean, we can set it up. I don't think we're going to set it up that, you know, when anyone responds. So, so there's a building permit with five, you know, staff people who, you know, building, planning, engineering, fire department. We, I mean, we do that now actually with our personal emails, but, you know, we would get an automatic reminder when a permit is ready. And then it can be set up to have a subsequent, you know, a week later or two weeks later or something like that. And then, you know, one of the good things is, useful things is to check on a permit status. So all of the respondents are in one place instead of having to, you know, there'll just be, there's a button or a button to push whether you want to see who hasn't responded, you know, check this response, who hasn't responded. Look up, look at the comments. So you want to see what the engineering department has said on it. So that's all in one place right now. You know, anytime you do any of, any of that kind of inquiry, you have to go to different programs and kind of do a little, you know, investigative work. So it's, you know, and that kind of is sort of a little bit of a delay. Whereas, you know, when it, when you open the portal, all of that information is available on the screen.
On slide number three, I'm using them to kind of prompt my questions. So thank you. So does that licensing, training, would that also include the hardware costs for the tablets and so forth? At fifty-five thousand?
No, I, I don't think the tablet costs are included in there. But if you look at tablets, we have one building inspector and a building official. And, and so it would be pretty limited and so it'd be a relatively low cost, but it's not included in that quote.
And then regarding the server, is that in the same room as dispatch? Because I know there was a heating issue.
It, it would, it, it wouldn't be, it would be in the other city server room. And we're going through a similar, you know, the last meeting in December, the council approved the Park software, which is also a Tyler software. So it's the same brand as our finance software, the proposed building software. And we're going through that now. So we're hoping if this is approved tonight, to be able to have all that work done on the server at the same time. And so they bring in the new servers to serve both parks and, and community development.
Okay. And last question for me is on the annual maintenance, is this a contractual? Like they can't jack up the price once we put their software in place for many, many years? Or how do we guarantee the fourteen thousand?
I need to review the terms of the contract, but I understand, let me take a look. It may have those terms in the quote that was attached to the staff report.
Merritt, I could probably help address that question if you'd like.
Please.
So I would suspect that would be same to our finance software. And what we included in that agreement is that it cannot increase more than three percent per year. So there would see annual increases, but it wouldn't be, you know, they wouldn't all of a sudden come in with a 10% increase or something major. It would just be kind of smaller, more incremental, manageable increases, if any at all.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question. I think you're on mute, Tammy. If you want to unmute, we can't hear you. I see Councilmember Losi has a question too.
Sorry, my iPad fell and I must have hit it. I can't see any hands on here because I can't see anybody. So you're just going to have to speak up. The, the screen's on, so I can't see any of you. So Mike Losi has some questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Liz, I, I know you mentioned that there's basic information available to the public, like limited data. But I'm wondering if the possibility exists for a portal to be available for planning commission members to access additional information if they would have a question on a particular project or something. So that's, that's one question. And then the other question I had along the lines of Jeremy's issues with regard to the cost. Have you figured if the five percent technical fee will cover the annual maintenance cost on this?
Yes, that's what the, the five percent on building permit fees is specifically generated to cover that exact annual maintenance cost.
Okay.
And I don't know if we would make like an entire file available to the planning commission or the public. You know, typically it's, it's limited to probably the permit application and the permit itself and maybe the, you know, the receipt. It just see, I think it's cumbersome to make the whole file available. And we do have, there would be a, you know, a means to communicate on a, on a specific project by email through that portal specifically. And, you know, that would be, I think, the means to garner additional information on a project. And then again, the, the file is public, a public record. So, you know, on request, you know, and we do email parts of a file or if it's a public records request, we do copy the whole file and issue that.
And if I could add to that list, specifically the question is, would the planning commission have access to it? Just like any member of the public would, you have to pay additional fees for each user. And we wouldn't think they would need it with such frequency, but they could go to planning staff and they can make an inquiry. And Liz should be able to print off the status of her project at any time. And so they really wouldn't, they, they wouldn't really have a role in accessing or, or moving that information or processing it. But it would be readily available to them through our, through staff. And, and what the public can view on the online portal.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson, did you have a question?
I was just going to make a comment and looking at the survey and from what Liz had said, looking, I mean, would you pay a small fee for large format in-house printing? Six out of nine said yes, preferred application submittal method. Nine out of twelve said online portal or email with digital plans and printing. Preferred building inspection scheduling. Online portal was the majority, preferred building permit issuance and payment. Online payment portal and email or online portal was the, for those. So it appears that a lot of the developers and the builders are using this method already and they've gotten used to it. And in the interest of COVID and convenience, they're interested in this method. So I think this, and the five and a half percent fee would cover the maintenance cost, it looks like. So it looks like this is the way of the future and we're coming into it on the tail end, but we are moving in that direction.
Mayor Protem, if I could just kind of make a comment in response to Councilmember Johnson's kind of analysis of that. I would just say, Mike, I, I agree that there's a lot of developers that are putting in projects and to be able to save them time. Some are in Eureka, some are other places and, and they're processing a lot of applications. There's certainly a lot of them that, as you can see from the results, they were supportive and, and want to see that platform. And I was also saying there's, there's also some that, you know, they've always printed them, they've always submitted them, they're close by in Fortuna and they are happy with it how it is. So it is a mixed bag and the numbers are in that, the staff report and the questionnaire. And, you know, is it a hundred percent? Everybody wants it? No. But it seems like the majority are in support of the convenience of being able to do that. And, you know, as we get further, you know, as we move on in the future, it just seems like that expectation is going to be more prevalent and, and supported. So that's, that's why we're going that direction. We're trying to keep up with the times and, or catch up, depending how, how you see it.
Thank you.
I understand that because I still come in and pay my, pay my water bill in person, even though I could do it electronically. So I know that not everybody's going that direction, but it appears that a majority is. So thanks.
So Liz, well, over the counter permits and people who still want to bring their paper permits in, are they going to be charged the fee for this? That they're not going to be using?
That's a good question. I do believe it would, at this point, unless we change it, it would be on each permit.
See, cause I could see that would be a, a problem for some, you know, some people that are just getting an over the counter. You know, permit, you just go and you're not using the system at all, or people who bring in their stuff and are not using the system or still having to pay for the system.
Yeah, I think it would be justified anyway to include it. Because the software would still be used by the city on their permit. So, you know, even though that particular permit may not, that person may not get the benefit directly, you know, in what they're doing. Um, their permit would still benefit because, you know, it's being used, the software has been used to, um, process their permit as well. So it, it would still be collected on every permit.
So that, that software has to be used to do an over the counter permit?
Yeah, just for taking it in for storage, you know, for processing and for storage and for, um, payment processing.
And, and so say, for example, somebody came in for a hot water heater P permit that costs forty dollars, it would be a two dollar technology fee. So pretty small on those over the counter permits.
And that information would be entered by staff on staff time. So there would need to be a charge for that.
Yeah. So is it going to take more staff time to enter every permit or is it going to cut down on staff time?
Um, well, so if they do it online, there wouldn't be any staff input. So the applicant would put in the information on that permit and then that would automatically, you know, um, that information would be collected in the software and then distributed through the referral process. Um, if, so.
So somebody has to enter it, don't they?
Uh, on a paper copy, staff would input the data, but this process um, eliminates that. That's one of the steps that gets eliminated. To get the input gets, the information gets inputted automatically. It would still need to be checked and probably there might be.
Initially, there will still be some project setup. It would be similar to what there is now when you're looking at the whole, when you're looking at the project. You wouldn't have to do an independent fee calculation, but all that would have to be checked. Where we're really going to save the time is when you're looking at the processing, moving the information between departments, responding to requests, getting the, getting the uploads of the plan. So the efficiency is going to become, come during the submittal review and the review process. In the project setup, it's still going to have to re-review. There's going to be a little bit of upfront time, but that's not where the time savings will come from.
So when one person is done with it and it's going to the next one, will it automatically notify the next person that it's ready for them?
Everybody will look at it at the same time and have the ability to comment. And, and the nice thing is the transparency. So somebody could, a, a developer could pull up their project and see exactly what the status is and, and what reviews have been completed. They can pull up the conditions, they can pull up the fees. Right now we get a lot of requests, people want, they can't, you know, they'll have a project, they can't remember what the conditions are. You know, it puts everything in one place for the developer. So when they have a question, a lot of times they'll be able to look right at that, know where it is. You know, and internally we'll be able to see that the fees have been paid. So for example, if we get a call and they need a water service put in by city forces, then the utility superintendent could very quickly look and say, oh, the fees have been paid. They could go out instead of having a chain of communication that goes from the building official to the finance desk to the engineer who oversees and then directs the utility crew to get out there. So it's, it's going to be some efficiency in communications and, and with all the departments being able to check the status online.
Okay. Um, Buffy, is there a number that has to go up to open public comment?
No, it's already across the screen.
Okay, okay. I'll open public comment. Do we have anybody waiting to make public comments?
I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay, if we don't have any public comments, then we can move on.
I have a couple more questions, if it's all right.
Yes.
Um, one for financing, our finance department. Um, this seems like a totally appropriate use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Um, but how much of those funds do we have remaining? Is this exhausting it to this last penny? Or are there other funds available for other projects such as this? It seems like with the COVID, um, this uh, eliminates that, uh, interpersonal exposure. So it seems very, very much appropriate. But I want to make sure we're not spending all of our last dime.
Aaron, I don't know. I have the last staff report with the last SBR up. I don't know if you want to, to run through that, you need to run through that or if you have it there.
Yeah, I have it pulled up. So again, just to recap, the city is expected to receive two million nine hundred thirty-two thousand. Uh, we spent two million dollars or we budgeted for two million dollars for the police department facility remodel project. Three hundred thousand dollars was for revenue recovery. Um, forty-five thousand dollars went to upgrading the audio visual in the council chambers. Uh, approximately a hundred twenty thousand went to the employee COVID nineteen premium pay. And then twenty-five thousand went to the, uh, Parkinson rec software server upgrades. So that totals to uh, two million four hundred ninety thousand. So that leaves four hundred forty-two thousand dollars that have not been allocated as of today. So take eighty thousand from that for this particular project. That would still leave about three hundred sixty thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so if nobody has any questions, do we have a motion? Liz, could you, um, take down your screen so we can see everybody again, please? Thank you. Nobody wants to make a motion?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I'll make a motion. I will move to approve an SPR supplemental budget request to use American Rescue Plan Act funds for Tyler Technologies and the server upgrades necessary to implement the community development permitting software in the amount of eighty thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
I'm undecided on this one. I guess I'll vote yes.
And Mayor Lam is abstained.
Okay, can we have mayor back?
I have a quick question about the, the remainder of the presentation. Um, we did not just approve a five and a half percent technology fee in that motion. Am I correct?
That's right.
So does that need a separate motion or will that come later?
That, Aaron can correct me if I'm wrong. That would be on the annual fee schedule, that that fee would get adopted. The fee schedule that typically accompanies the budget or, you know.
Yes, that's correct. So just to add a little bit more detail to that, uh, I believe, um, we don't have to pay for the annual maintenance cost until the software is up and running. So we don't anticipate that occurring until next fiscal year. So the plan would be to add that five percent technology fee into, uh, next fiscal year's fee schedule. So we usually start looking at the fee schedule around budget time, which will be March and April. Um, and so we'll, we'll make sure to include that and, and, uh, bring that up at that time.
And Aaron, just to, just to further that, that during the first year of setup, so that wouldn't be until twenty-three, twenty-four, the first year's included. So I think the first year would be twenty-two, twenty-three in the upcoming budget. So we'd have the implementation over the next several months and there wouldn't be a, a maintenance fee for the first, the whole first year. So we're a year plus out from having to implement that fee. So I think it would be the next, next budget cycle.
All right. Thank you, Tammy. We'll move on to our next item, which is a public hearing to consider Senate Bill nine and urgency ordinance implementing state mandated procedures for urban lot splits and two unit projects. Ordinance twenty-two-two dash seven five one. Staff report, please.
Deputy Director Shore is going to be presenting this one. And, and again, just a, a, a brief summary is that SB nine was a state mandate with, um, various requirements. And so deputy director put together this emergency ordinance to allow the city some of the distribution and to put this in place as an urgency ordinance uh, in the short term until we can work on it more in the long term. So with that, I'll hand it over to Liz and she can provide a staff report.
Thank you, Merritt. Honorable mayor and council members, I'm going to go ahead and start the PowerPoint and get us through this. So, um, you know, so SB nine, you know, you probably have heard about it over the last year. It's been somewhat controversial and published in, you know, California, um, government publications and even in the newspapers. Um, so I, so what we're going to be talking about is the urgency ordinance itself and why we're doing an urgency ordinance. I'll run through what SB nine does, what the statute does. And that kind of runs together with the next state requirements and then, um, the proposed code amendments for the Fortuna municipal code. Um, it is, you know, there's a lot to it. It's, you know, somewhat confusing because there's a couple of different sections. They're separate and yet they overlap. And, um, you know, it is, it is a lot of information. So the urgency ordinance is allowed by government code and it's specifically for land use and zoning. It's not the same as an emergency ordinance. This is, um, for specifically for zoning and land use. Um, it's for, um, an ordinance would take immediate effect um, when there are public health and safety impacts and those are explained in the ordinance itself. There was, um, significant input by the city attorney. So, um, you know, to make sure that the ordinance followed the government code requirements for an urgency ordinance. Um, it also, the urgency ordinance bypasses the planning commission. Um, and so it's basically on a, kind of like a fast track because there's health and safety impacts. Um, the second reading is waived, so it would take effect, you know, basically tomorrow. Um, and the reason is, you know, for, in this case, SB nine dramatically increases housing density. Um, and impacts neighborhoods that way impacts that health and safety. Um, it provides little guidance. So it's kind of a complicated thing, um, to implement without that guidance. Um, so the local ordinance creates the standard, the processing standards as well as the, you know, zoning standards. Um, and it poses health and safety impacts. Um, so the local code, as I just said, establishes a clear application review and approval process, reduces uncertainty, set, create standards and ensures health and safety issues are addressed. So it's definitely justified and that's why we, you know, thought it was urgent enough to bypass the planning commission. Um, urgency ordinances are, um, there are certain government code sections limiting the if time, timeframe. Um, we are going to, uh, go through the regular ordinance process through the planning commission. So we will be bringing forward a regular ordinance. So, um, and that will also allow a little bit of extra time to consider other kind of standards that might be adopted for the SB nine um, components of the code. So SB nine, what it is, it requires, um, ministerial approval of urban lot splits and two unit projects. So the ministerial approval means there's no public hearing. Um, there are the standards that are established by the state law. And then there are some objective standards that cities may adopt. They're, they're pretty limited. Um, I'll show you at the end. I'll, I'll go through the discussion and then, um, summarize them on one of the slides of, of what the local code does propose. Um, but basically it allows the automatic lot split of residential single family and then automatically two units on every parcel. So what it would look like, um, here's a standard parcel, existing single family unit on that parcel. Just the two unit project allows an additional residence. This could also in some cities or if the code allows, um, under SB nine, it could also allow an ADU and a junior ADU. So you could actually even have four on this lot. And some cities will choose to do that. Um, and then the other alternative or, um, through the lot split is to split that original single family parcel. And, um, you have the original house with an extra, you know, new unit. And actually this one should be two new units. Um, so with this, you know, the original one house on one lot, now you've got four houses. And with NADU and junior ADU, you could even have, you know, additional four units, which is actually not proposed in the draft. And that's one of the reasons for the urgency ordinance, as I'll explain. So the lot, for the lot split, um, the stand, the statute says that each lot must be at least twelve hundred square feet. So subdivision of a single family residential lot could be as small as twelve hundred square feet. Um, but each other sort of mitigating things, that each lot must be at least forty percent of the original lot. So, um, you can't go below forty percent of that lot. So that is going to preclude twelve hundred square feet in a lot of cases. Um, so six, so we call it sort of a fifty or a forty-sixty split, um, and that's the minimum. Um, it, so it may require onsite access and utility easements if they're needed. So you need an access easement to get to the back of the lot for that new unit, um, and utility easements. Um, off-site improvements are prohibited. So this is a really big change from subdivisions. So the statute says that, um, cities can't provide, can't require the normal set of conditions of approval on a subdivision that would require, um, off-site improvement. So what the state is saying is that they want to make it as affordable and, um, you know, as far as affordable as possible and as little conditioned as possible. Now, there are some, so the code does allow limited offset improvements in health and safety situations. And, um, the city attorney did work with the code and with the city's requirements to require limited offset improvements for health and safety impacts. Um, you know, require it and that, it's really limited basically to, uh, you know, the statute right now doesn't even require or allow the sidewalk in front of, you know, an off-site sidewalk in front of parcel or limited street paving to complete the street in front of the parcel. So those are clear, you know, health and safety accessibility impacts. So the city attorney did work to make those findings in the ordinance. So, um, this is one of the reasons we wanted to, um, bring this forward as an urgency ordinance. Um, the lot must be within a single family residential zone. So it's only allowed in residential zones, not in commercial and not in multifamily. Uh, the lot splits cannot be, um, they can only be done once. So someone can't do one of the SB nine lot split and then subdivide those new lots, you know, again and again, and get smaller and smaller lots. Um, they're, they're only allowed once. And then adjacent parcels cannot be subdivided by the same owner. And I think that's to minimize like investment, you know, large sale investment, um, developments. Um, where SB nine projects are prohibited, not, they're not allowed in historic districts or where there's a historic landmark. This is all statute stuff that's mandatory, uh, as it all is, it's, you know, a state mandate that we're dealing with. Um, certain identified sensitive areas, including wetlands, earthquake fault zones, high fire hazard areas, FEMA hundred year flood plains, prime farm land and lands under conservation easements. And, you know, really it's, these are, these sensitive areas, um, really don't warrant higher density development. So, um, that's why these are included in the prohibited areas. Um, so the, as far as the developments, the two unit projects, um, the state law says that we must allow a minimum of five, of eight hundred square foot units. Um, so we can't prohibit up to eight hundred square feet. Over, over that, um, local standards can be adopted to restrict size. And in fact, um, the draft does call for a maximum. So the, the Fortuna code draft, um, calls for a minimum or a lot, a unit size range between eight, five hundred square feet and eight hundred square feet. Um, on, on the two unit developments. Um, no setbacks for existing structure. So state says that if you have an existing structure with maybe non-conforming setbacks, um, five feet from the property line. If that building is going to be partially demolished or completely demolished and they're allowed to build back on those setbacks without requiring the, um, setbacks for the zone. That's just part of the statute. Um, there can be up to, or the state says there must be up to a four foot setback on the side and rear setbacks. If, uh, if the unit cannot be constructed any other way. So this is similar to the accessory dwelling unit, um, code that was just adopted and, and what the state law requires. So this is kind of just a repeat of that standard. Um, so the draft code does specify that, you know, the, the zone setbacks will be required unless, um, unless that eight hundred square foot unit cannot be constructed otherwise. Um, parking, the code require, or the state allows up to one space per unit. Um, a jurisdiction, if they wanted to, they have the discretion to not require any parking. Um, we cannot mandate, or we cannot, you know, require mandatory addition. We cannot mandate, or we cannot, you know, require mandatory additional parking beyond that. If the project is within a half mile of high quality transit corridor, then the statute says that we cannot require any parking. And Fortuna does not fit that definition. There's a state definition. And it's, it specifies that the bus route would have 15 minute pickup intervals during peak, peak travel times. So Fortuna doesn't qualify in that regard. So we don't need to go with zero. We've got one, what we, code does call for one space per unit, as, as occurred by the statute. Accessory dwelling units, the statute says that the lot splits may prohibit ADUs and junior ADUs. The two unit developments, the statute is silent. So what the draft code does is propose no ADUs or junior ADUs on this lot splits or the two unit development projects. So that's fairly consistent with the code. You know, with two units on, the two of the SB nine units on each lot, that's, you know, that's fairly dense. And so some cities, depending on, you know, how they address infill development and affordable housing and this type of development, they may support ADUs and junior ADUs. I think in Fortuna, you know, with the type of development and the expectation and the density that we already have, I think there's concern that that's too dense. And so staff proposes that ADUs and junior ADUs are not allowed on the SB nine projects. So there is an ability to deny, but it's limited. The language to denotability, to deny, you know, because the state is, is making this a mandate and that these projects are to be approved ministerially. They do make the, you know, the standards to deny, it needs to be based on the preponderance of the evidence that there would be a specific adverse impact on public health and safety. And so what that basically means is the health and safety issue basically needs to be objective and quantifiable, measurable and not arbitrary. So city, so the code does include a set of standards or findings for denial. And I think that's one of the reasons, one of the justifications for having this as an urgency ordinance without the, that set of findings. You know, just to rely on the statute, the state law, there's not enough guidance there. We wanted to provide some guidance for making denials and that's what the draft code does. The statute says that the building official makes the written findings. This has been changed to be the community development director. And that is because the, the code, the statute, the state code doesn't really recognize the role of community development on land, you know, land use, zoning and this type of development. Building officials are typically just concerned with the building code. So we changed it to community development. They are the supervisor of the building officials. So there would be some communication and, you know, collaboration there. So that's just kind of a minor change that we made. The state law does not allow short term rentals. So Airbnbs are not allowed in an SB nine development. There's a three year occupancy of the principal residence by the property owner on a lot split. And the state law says that they sign an affidavit to demonstrate that they intend to occupy them. That's not required for just the straight two, two unit development. And then there's also laws that prohibit displacement of renters and affordable housing. So the state, you know, clearly wanted to protect renters and affordable housing from being displaced. Other provisions, SEQA, the statute exempts SB nine projects from the California Environmental Quality Act, and that's a way of streamlining affordable housing approvals. And then we also have in the ordinance a subdivision amendment adding a definition of urban lot splits. So the lot split section of the code and of SB nine impacts, you know, subdivision approvals, which are, which are implemented under title 16. So subdivisions aren't in the zoning code. We wanted to recognize urban lot splits in the subdivision section of the code. And so we added a definition. And the statute does recognize the subdivision map act as implementing, you know, the rest of the requirements for a subdivision. So it still needs to go through the surveying requirements, the recording of the map and every other professional and state code that governs maps. So the draft zoning standards, these are really, you know, SB nine really restricts what the local agencies can do. You know, and it really can potentially increase, dramatically increase the density of a, of a town. So what we could do, you know, that's basically on the, the slide here. We could control the limit size so that the structures aren't going to be quite as imposing. And, you know, this will minimize the densification in the single family zones to some degree, kind of protect the neighborhoods from, you know, just having this increased density, increased traffic, increased, you know, just the population and the utilities and the noise and all of the things like that. So reducing the size, we're allowed. ADUs are called out and our code is not being allowed on any SB nine parcel. And we codified the setback, so that just gives us some more security in establishing and requiring the, the rear and the side setbacks. While we'll still have to recognize the four foot setback when it's needed to allow an 800 square foot unit. Offsite improvements where required for health and safety. So without this code section, we wouldn't have been able to require a sidewalk or street paving or things of that nature, just really minimal subdivision standards. There's denial findings. So if the projects don't meet, you know, basically it's a kind of a reiteration of what the state allows us to do, but it gives us more authority. We established an appeal process. And then it clarifies and codifies the administrative permit review process. So that's going to reduce confusion. There really wasn't any guidance in the state laws. So anything that needs to be submitted, you know, along with that application that demonstrates some of the requirements, like the, the affidavit for the three year occupancy and the demonstration that rental units aren't displaced, things like that. You know, that they're in the code now so that it's going to be clear. We'll put that in our applications. And then, you know, we'll be able to point to the code. Instead of having to analyze the state law to implement SB nine, you know, we've got the process clear and so it more neatly fits Fortuna and it's really going to facilitate the process. So anyway, these are really the main, you know, why did we do it? These are the things that were, that were allowed to do under SB nine and that we think were really important. If these weren't done, this kind of created the urgency or aspect of it. When we go to the planning commission, we will have some more time now, under a little bit less pressure, but, you know, we'll be able to consider possibly other objective standards that might apply and bring those back. You know, the planning commission, then we'll make the recommendation and then we'll bring it to the council for a first reading and a second reading. So how these might impact Fortuna, I think it's, you know, to some degree, to a large degree, and the, the single family lots really aren't going to facilitate additional units or additional, you know, lot splits. You can see, here's a standard 6,000 square foot lot. And it's built, you know, pretty much about 30, 30% with, with the structure. They really aren't going to be able to split that in that 40 60 manner. So they aren't going to be able to get, you know, have 40%, at least 40% on that new lot. Or they'll also have, they're really restricted with, they've got a five foot setback. But, you know, for that access easement to, to construct a driveway to reach that house, they're not going to have enough room. You know, you need 12 feet, they've only got five feet there. So those are really the problems or, you know, why, for the most part, these, the, these subdivisions, this is the sinister subdivision. But whether you're in Lawndale or Kenmore, the new subdivisions in Kenmore. You know, they're really going to not, for the most part, you're not going to see a lot of that type of development. There are some, you know, exceptions, the vacant lots in, in these neighborhoods definitely could have an SB lot split. So you could end up with four, four units here and then four on this lot. So, you know, and that's certainly going to be an impact to that neighborhood to have eight, you know, eight units where there were four, where there would have been two, I mean. And then the other type of exception you see around town are just these older historic large parcels that have not been developed yet. And they would probably be feasible for an SB nine lot split. Again, they can only go through one SB nine split. So you wouldn't get, you know, anything smaller like see on this parcel, you'd get two, two lots, but, but no more than that. So, and that's pretty much the, you know, within this kind of an R16 neighborhood, that's what you're going to find. There are some areas of the city where there are larger lots. This is Rancho Buena Vista, where the minimum lot size is a half an acre. So they, you know, for the most part, they do have the room to, to create a new lot. And they also probably have the ad room for the most part to create a driveway access. So they could end up and actually, you know, to build a new parcel or a new unit on the original parcel and then two units on the new parcel. So they could be impacted. It's probably the same situation in other parts of the area like Hillside Drive. Some of the lots in Camden Heights are still large and open to subdivision. So these neighborhoods could have an impact. So that's kind of why we wanted to clean up the process, eliminate ADUs, you know, additional, which would create additional units. And then kind of clean up the ability to have some minimal subdivision improvements and just to clean up the whole process. So your recommendation is to, you're the one ordinance, or the one motion in, that's in the ordinance would adopt the, you know, it'd be an urgency ordinance. It would waive the second reading. It would make the finding of SEQA exemption and it would adopt the standards that are attached to that ordinance. And that, I will pass that back to the city council.
Thank you, Liz. Does anyone have comments or questions?
I have a question. So is this ordinance basically to make it a little bit more restrictive than what the state is asking?
I mean, you could, I mean, you could definitely call it more restrictive. You know, city can go either way. We really wanted to clean it up and, you know, we kind of followed the path of the ADU ordinance as far as what fits Fortuna, what are, you know, what has the city done in the past, what direction has the city gone in? We wanted to kind of create a pause with this urgency ordinance so that we could, you know, revisit it with, with the normal, the regular ordinance. So, I mean, it's restrictive in the sense that it, it proposes that ADUs are prohibited and it also proposes, you know, the smaller unit size between 500 and 800 square feet. That, those are the ways that it gets, you could call it prohibitive.
So this, this ordinance gives the city a little bit more control?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it recognizes the type of development and, you know, the, the standards and expectations for Fortuna.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Council member Losi has his hand up.
Let's see it now. Liz, would you take your screen down so we can see? Thank you. All this zooming stuff is annoying. Mike Losi, you were first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's interesting to note that SB nine does really nothing to address the affordability issues that the state legislature was yelling about with both SB 10 and nine. Liz, so if our zoning provisions prohibited two units on one parcel, would that preempt SB nine?
Could you repeat that question?
If, if our zoning provisions prohibited two units on one parcel, single family residences or, or areas, would, would that preempt SB nine?
So the, the code, so the draft code under SB nine, in response to SB nine, it does allow two units per parcel.
Okay.
So it's implementing SB nine.
Okay, so even if we had a prohibiting zoning for a single family residences, SB nine wouldn't be affected, it wouldn't affect SB nine?
Right now, right now, our zoning ordinance, for example, on R16, have, only allows one residence. You know, with the recent ADU ordinance, they're allowed to have an ADU now. So what this does is it puts size restrictions onto those two units that could be there. So our, the state, the state law trumps our zoning ordinance, I guess, for that question.
Yes.
All right. Okay, thank you. Under Exhibit A, page 33, under uppercase A to E, it talks about the affidavit. It's page 33 of 27.
Yes.
And under E. And it says, talks about conditions, covenants or restrictions on the property that prevented, prohibit subdivision of the property. Does that mean, does that mean that if there were covenants in a homeowners association prohibiting the provisions of SB nine, in other words, a lot split, could that preclude the lot split?
Yes. So SB nine specifically made this provision. So this comes right out of SB nine. So they said, so it says that they, that the CCNRs prevail over SB nine. As opposed to the ADU ordinance or the ADU statute where they did the opposite. They said even, you know, it doesn't matter if you have homeowners association regulations or CCNRs or any other kind of restriction, ADUs are automatically allowed in those areas. So for whatever reason, they changed their mind and said, in this case, CCNRs can prevail. So that's why that's in there. So, and you can see why we wanted the ordinance, this, this section that you're referring to is the application submittal section. And so, you know, as part of the application, they are going to demonstrate that there are no CCNRs that would otherwise restrict SB nine units. Which is, you know, title report or some other way where it would appear that they have them.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. Also under C, and it's under 11. Small C, and this would be on page 37. And it starts, "The city council may establish guidelines that set forth circumstances where a project will have a specific adverse effect or impact on either public health, safety or on the physical environment." Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, can you give us an example or some specifics about what that, what some of those adverse effects would be?
You know, the state law already includes a list of, you know, sensitive areas that are prohibited, like his, his. You know, um, sensitive areas that are prohibited, like his historic district. Um, you know, natural habitat area, these are the fire hazard, earthquake zones, these are things that might come up. You know, specific to a city. Um. It could be, I don't know, the airport. Noise zone or, and you know, anything, so these are unanticipated items, so it's just saying that, yes, the city. Um, if the city adopts any sensitive kind of an area, um, these limitations will apply. And that would be, could be considered um an adverse impact, so it's kind of leaving it open to the city. And kind of protecting them for any future. Um, adoptions. Does that make sense?
It it does, so it's it's kind of wide open as to what would or could be a adverse impact on. Public health, safety, or the physical environment.
Yeah.
Another example could be flood impact, say if you create one of these and then you you have flooding impacts, you know, where. You know, we might not be able to make those findings normally. Under S B nine, this 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 gives us. It doesn't give us that ability, but we we have the ability to use discretion, so it's just any physical impact is is what it says on the, from the physical environment.
I also wanted to note on this page. Under A I. We need to scratch the M S H C P reference. It's really just a, it's referring to a sensitive area that we don't have, but it again, this is um. These are sections that the statute allows to be used as um adverse impacts. Um. So we're adopting them even though, like, say, we don't have a historic district, but we included that in the code in case. We adopt one in the future, then um S B nine projects would be prohibited in those zones, and so that's kind of what. Section you're reading through. So the M S H C P, that should be deleted and should just be um. It's it's really referring to habitat conservation plan area that. We don't have, I don't think we have one of those in Humboldt County, not, we don't.
Delete I in the entirety then, because that's what it.
What's that?
So should they delete that sub-bullet or bullet I in its entirety then, Liz? No need to talk about that, we don't.
We could, or we could just leave it general to a um. Lowercase habitat conservation area.
Liz, I I I want to thank you for. Putting the work into this ordinance, and I think we all understand that. These are steps that we need to take to. Keep as much control, local control as we can. Within the provisions of S B nine, so thank you for your work on this and as well as all the the rest of city staff.
Yeah, I think, you know, coming on the heels of the accessory dwelling unit regulations that um, you know, that the city went through. And I know that at the staff level, that whole process, you know, the A D U statutes came out a number of years ago, and we were. We've been implementing. The regulations out of the state regulations rather than a local ordinance, and you know, that that was pretty cumbersome, and. You know, I think it benefited the city to have it all organized and codified, so I think um. You know, now there's that part of it, and also just that. You know, I think it's important to um. Get ahead of it when we can, and so I think this just came on the heels of A D U, that were A D U ordinance and made it. The process flow a little bit better.
Well, I think it's taken extra effort on your part to put this together and bring it to us, so I think.
Yeah, it's a complicated, you know, the state law, it's it's not super complicated, but enough where. Um, yeah. But I think it's good to understand it.
Liz, we should probably add that our city attorney helped with the review of this and putting together the staff report and the drafting of the ordinance as well, he's. Pretty efficient, been a big help.
Yeah, significant, significantly.
Jeremy, you had your hand up, did your question get answered, or do you want to say something?
No, I'd like to say so, I was just curious, um, it was my understanding that S B nine only applied to um. Owner occupied. Is that correct?
Um, for the lot split section, the owner must agree to occupy one of the units. For three years. So if they do the lot split, that's where the, there's the owner occupation requirement. The if they're just doing an extra unit on their property, um, it can be rental.
So it's not a free-for-all for everybody that owns a rental to run out and put another unit in the back?
Um, if they, if they're not doing the lot split, then yes, they can do that.
Okay, but then it it would have to be like a flag lot with twelve twelve-foot ingress egress. If you were to split it, is that what I'm hearing?
Um, that's one of the configurations that would work, yeah. If they have more room in the back, they're going to do a flag lot. Basically, they would, because most houses are up front.
So nobody could get creative and just put a parking pad in the front lawn and then a walking path to a unit in the back?
Well, the code says that they need to, they need to provide one parking space. Per unit, and they need to have access to their unit, so they're going to need to have a driveway to their house.
Okay, does that parking have to be covered in the current ordinance?
Um. So the standard, so the regular zoning standards may be applied if they don't preclude development. Of one of the units, an eight-hundred-square-foot unit, so we would require covered parking as a carport or a covered garage.
You would?
Yeah.
But A D U's do not.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Anyone else, let's open up public comment in case anyone on our call wants to participate or anyone wants to call in. Does anyone from the council have any other comments or questions?
One more question, um, with regards to older parts of town that have an alleyway, is that an appropriate? Ingress egress access for a lot split and a a secondary unit?
Um, probably, we do allow access to garages. The code recognizes that, there's a certain setback from an alley when the garage is proposed on. Um, from the alley.
And would that require paving that alley?
Um, we do, we do require it generally now. Um. We would have to look at the the extent of the paving and consider if that is an allowable um offsite improvement.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a real quick.
Go ahead.
Que- question, uh, Madam Mayor, um. Do we need to have a special finding if we if we, somebody makes a motion on this, do we need a special finding? For an uh urgency ordinance?
Um, no. Ryan Plots, the city attorney. Um, prepared the ordinance to um. Cover the required findings that are required by the government code.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, I don't see anyone from the public. So we'll close public comment.
Yeah, and the ordinance itself on page twenty-eight is an urgency ordinance.
I didn't know if we needed to um include any um finding in the motion itself.
So in an urgency ordinance, does it have a sunset date automatically, or is it in effect until the new? Ordinance that's gone through the planning commission is implemented?
You know, I'm not sure, I thought that it had, um, I think like a forty-five day, and then. The way the code is written. It looks like it has some expirations and then some allowable extensions, but um. I didn't get clarification from Ryan, and then in seeing what other cities have done, I don't see where they're doing an extension, so I don't know if. You know, the code has another provision where. Since this is adopting zoning standards, it may be different from, you know, a different type of urgency ordinance where there's. Like an imminent health and safety. Um, you know, physical health or safety issue. As opposed to zoning standards that are then going to protect over the long term, so I'm not really sure, and I will get back to you on that.
I I believe it's forty-five days, but we can get back to the council on that.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
Is there any? Public, or did you close public?
I closed.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seven five one and read by title only.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, Buffy.
Hey, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seven five one, an urgency ordinance of the city council. Of the city of Fortuna, California, amending Title seventeen zoning regulations of the Fortuna Municipal Code. By adding chapter seventeen point zero nine, state mandated procedures, and by amending Title sixteen. Subdivisions by adding section sixteen point zero four point zero seven zero. Urban lot splits and determining the ordinance to be exempt from sequo. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, and yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes, thank you, Buffy. All right, our next item is council review and discussion of commission applications and mayor's appointment of seats. Um, this one is for the historical commission, there were four applicants for three seats, um. Three of the. Current, well, they expired December thirty-first, but three of the people, Ruth Beckett, Susan O'Hara. And Pam Zana all currently serve on the historical commission and all asked to be reappointed. So that would be my recommendation, and I did. Share with Eldon Whitehead via email that um it would be maybe a good idea for him to go down and talk to Alex and see if there were any. Volunteer opportunities that he could step into. Uh, while he's waiting, maybe for someone that doesn't want to. Reapply the next time around, but again, like. With our major E people, it's hard to kick people off when they're enjoying what they're doing, they're working very well together and with uh. Alex, our museum curator, and she also uh expressed her desire to keep the three current people on. So that is my recommendation. We can open public comment in case anyone wants to say anything while the council is talking. Any questions, thoughts?
I've served as the liaison to, from the council to the. Historical commission, and I know that. Pam Zana, Susan O'Hara, and Ruth Beckett. Were do a remarkable job on that, and they. Um. Have a passion for it, not just a, it's not just a position for them, it's something they enjoy. And I think they make great. Uh, commission members.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? I don't see any public raising hands or. Joining us, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Buffy.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes, and thank you. All for your applications and for being willing to serve the city, we appreciate it. Our next item is to approve recruitment for a public works director and eliminate the deputy public works director position, Merritt.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Long, so the recent resignation by the public work deputy, the deputy director of public works led. Us to do a review of that position, its responsibilities, currently staff feels like the city would be better served by removing the city manager's. Responsibilities as a public works director and having a full-time dedicated person to serve in that position. Due to the demands on the city manager for other assignments, projects outside of public works, there's, there really is a. A need for more oversight, staff development and support, and and full-time participation in that department. Um, with this proposal, we'd eliminate the deputy director position and we'd add a director position. To be able to provide that oversight and support. Um, we wanted to bring this with a comprehensive organizational chart change, um, we didn't quite pull it together last week, but. Time is of the essence on this one, so we really want to get the recruitment for the public works director out there, so we brought this independently. I do expect to bring those org chart changes back to the council on February seventh. The proposed pay scale for the new public works director position is shown in the, in the pay rate schedule that's attached to the staff report. It would start at eighty-four thousand and go up to a hundred and two thousand, that doesn't include any negotiated um increases with the unrepresented. Um, employees group. So there's also uh an impact, uh, a table showing the budget impact, the net budget impact would be a five thousand dollar increase to the general fund. And also an increased enterprise funds in the amount of fourteen thousand dollar, fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. There are other changes that we anticipate making in public works that would reduce the enterprise cost and actually. Result in a savings, but again, that'll be on February seventh, so the overall budget impact we expect is five thousand dollars to the general fund.
All right, let's open up public comment. If anyone would like to call the number on your screen, or if any of the participants on our call would like to join our conversation, raise your hand. Um, questions, comments from the council? Nothing?
Go for it, Sue, I know you have questions.
I'm good. I read my report and looked at my chart and I'm good.
Yeah.
And good staff reports.
So seeing no one from the public joining us, we'll close public comment.
I will go ahead and move to approve city staff proceeding with the recruitment of a public works director and elimination of the deputy public works director position.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Buffy.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes, all right, uh, city manager's report.
I'll stop doing that one day, um, I just have a brief report, I want to. Update the public and the council on the upcoming meeting schedule, our next regular meeting is on February seventh at six o'clock P M. Our next planning commission meeting is on January twenty-fifth at six o'clock P M, our next measure E meeting. Is January nineteenth tomorrow, five thirty P M, and thank you, uh, councilmember Stanfield and others for pointing out to the public that we do want. Public ideas and input on measure refund, so that would be at the meeting tomorrow at five thirty. And then the next runner community recreation and park district meeting is on February second at two thirty P M. And I'll just say that a lot of my time over the last couple of weeks has been going into negotiations with the city's bargaining units. It's taken quite a bit of time, but we're we're making good progress, and that's also an item that's on closed session for tonight's meeting. So that concludes my staff report, thank you.
Okay.
If I could just add one more thing, we are expecting to bring back, um, at the last meeting, a feature agenda item was an update on the police facility. So we are going to be making a presentation on the police facility at the next meeting.
All right, thanks. Any uh questions for Merritt before we move on to future agenda items? All right, seeing none, do we have any new future agenda items? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to city council reports, Mike Johnson.
Well, this will be short and sweet, the. I was signed up for a Cal Cities Policy Committee orientation and welcome. And we went into a closed session special workshop for. That day, so I missed that, but I did notice that they emailed me the. PowerPoints and the meeting tape, so I'll watch that, and. Then uh I have not had any meetings, but this coming Thursday, we have an H C O G meeting. Next week, I'm going to be an alternate for R C E A. And while Mike is otherwise engaged, and I will give him a download and some info. And he will probably watch the the presentation. the presentation on that on YouTube and to get oriented. And that's all I have for now. Everything's in the future. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Mike Losi.
Thank you, Sue. Um, and thank you, Mike, for doing that. I appreciate it. Um, I have a LAFCO meeting tomorrow um, nine AM. And it will be zoomed. And I haven't had any other meetings since uh, our last meeting, but on January fifth, I had the good fortune to attend the changing of the guard ceremony at the Fortuna Fire Hall where our longstanding fire chief Lon Winburn retired after thirty seven years with the department and fired, being fire chief since two thousand and five. And he handed the reins over to longtime assistant chief Russ Brown, who had the chief's badge pinned on him by his wife. And uh, of course, his children and every, everybody was there. Uh, folks from our community were there, including our fire commissioners, our second district supervisor, Michelle Bushnell and our retired, retired fire chief Frank Hyzer. I hadn't seen Frank in many, many years. And he was a fire chief, a great chief here for a long, long time. He comes from um, the old school of fire chiefs like Bud Westcott um, from, from that era. And so congratulations to Lon Winburn and his wife Julie for well-deserved retirement. Congratulations to Russ, who we know will do a fantastic job as our new fire chief. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Jeremy.
So um, we had a regular meeting uh, last week for uh, Fortuna Business Improvement District. And uh, we adopted some bylaws that are much more in line with the city ordinance and we're working on um, final preparations for the, of the auditor's draft uh, report for our audits. Um, we agreed to pay the last installment of our auditor's bill um, in December and um, we'll be working with the city manager and staff on a new contract in the next coming few weeks. Uh, we uh, got our website more updated recently and we're happy to announce a new employee that starts this coming Monday. Uh, we're offering a start out of sixteen hours per week to start, because that's what our budget allows and uh, uh, I'd like to welcome Kalen Stainbrook as our new director for Fortuna Business Improvement District. I think her enthusiasm and her savvy technology or tech, yeah, um, ability to use technology for social media. Um, she has a hobby slash side business that's photography, which I sure, I'm sure will come in handy with uh, some of her duties as the FBID director. And I hope she uh, grows the position and uh, I hope we can increase her hours as time goes by and her involvement in the business community. And I want to thank uh, again Erica Thompson for her commitment to FBID over ten years. Also like to thank um, our current president Emily Hobelmann for all of her dedication and time and energy throughout this process of transition, along with uh, uh, the other board members of FBID that have all contributed and stepped up in various ways to uh, really become a united front, a, a good team um, of volunteers that want to see the success of the business and the, and Business Improvement District. Uh, also, I want to thank, I'm probably going to steal a little bit of your thunder here because I wasn't able to attend, but I am the liaison for the Parks and Rec. So I want to thank Mayor Long and Councilman Johnson for going for the photo op regarding the new Toro mower uh, for uh, Parks and Rec. And a big thank you to Valley Petroleum for their generous donation to our needs through the Parks and Recs Department. And uh, just love seeing uh, the amount of kids out at Ronerville or Roan Park and Newburg Park still on that bike path and just going gangbusters though, over the last couple of weekends of sunshine that I've noticed and and our parks are looking great and I just really appreciate all the hard work and staff. Um, other than that, I think uh, that's all I have to report on city business, but um, just want to tell everybody that I hope their holiday and their new year and all that is going well and uh, the, the words for this year again are peace, compassion and prosperity for everybody.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
Well, mine is pretty short and simple. I have nothing to report.
Okay. Um, so Renee and I managed to get all the trophies and the money prizes out to all of the holiday dazzle winners. So that has ended for the year and that was pretty fun. Um, I've spent the last two Saturdays working on skills and drills with the Hot Shots Program. We've had about a hundred and sixty kids go through there in an hour forty five minutes and it is wild and crazy. We've had a lot more volunteers this last week, which was really good, but there's still only so much room in there. So I mean, it's it's crowded and you get all those balls bouncing and going in all the crazy directions, but it's really fun. The kids are adorable. So um, their games start on the twenty ninth. So we have one more Saturday of skills and drills and then it's game time. Um, I did attend my, what'd you call that, Mike? Initiation or whatever? Radiation, there we go, for the uh, public or uh, lead California cities. I always forget my, my committee housing. Housing Community and Economic Development Committee. Mike, I don't think you missed too much. It was really, really boring. So we didn't talk about anything. They just talked about making motions and yeah, it was boring. But I did it. So um, I have a redact meeting on Monday night and we'll have a redevelopment oversight board meeting uh, later this month where Aaron has prepared his props agreement. So hopefully that will be approved and we'll send that off to the Department of Finance and move that along. And with that, um, we do have two closed session items. Conference with real property negotiator pursuant to section five four nine five six point eight of the government code. Vacant land along Yale River and thirteen twenty Riverwalk Drive. Negotiating parties are the city manager, Merritt Perry for Fortuna and Land MP for the landowner. Under negotiation is a price in terms of payment. Our second item is conference with labor negotiator, city negotiator is the city manager Merritt Perry. The employee organizations are the Fortuna Police Employees Association, the Fortuna Employees Association and the Unrepresented slash Management Group in accordance with section five four nine five seven point six of the government code. So we can entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, Buffy will do her magic and then we will, we can meet.
Madam Mayor, I see a hand up with a, a cell phone.
Thank you. Um, whoever that is, do you have a comment? Are you there?
It looks like they're muted. Let me see if I can.
Unmute them. What is it, star six unmutes?
Um, I don't remember what it, which one unmute. There we go.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, our mayor and councilors. This is Justin Freeman, president of the Fortuna Police Employees Association. Is there an opportunity to, for public comment on the closed session items?
Um, as far as I know, we don't have any rules against that, do we?
No.
Go for it.
Okay, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, I would just like to start off by saying, uh, thank you to the city's negotiation team for all the hard work they put into negotiations and how helpful and prompt they've been uh, with information requests. I've negotiated on behalf of the FPA for several contracts and this time by far has been the best experience I've had. Um, members of the FPA negotiation team and the city's negotiation team have been working very hard uh, to put together a fair equitable contract for both sides. I feel the proposal you're going to review tonight in closed session is a fair and equitable for both the members of the FPA and the city. I know the FPA is not the only bargaining unit negotiating into contract and there's a much larger picture to consider. Uh, the FPA recognizes that, recognizes this and is why we feel the proposal will be fair to the FPA and the city. Um, however, even though we are only at one piece of the pie, we are extremely important piece. When someone is in danger, we go without question. When we are often there on the worst day of someone's life and depending on the circumstances, we can be the consequence and some, someone needs to turn their life around. We can be the ear that someone needs to vent and we can be the one performing life-saving efforts on a loved one and give them a fighting chance until Michael personnel can get there. And especially in times like this, we can be the person who steps in and gives someone help when their world is dark and they feel that there's only one way out. Each and one, every one of us carries, carries those experience and emotions with us and learning grow from them. Uh, in this line of work, it takes time to learn compassion for other people's situations uh, when we've never experienced that in our own lives. In today's world, experience, experienced personnel becoming harder to come by and finding new people who want to take those experiences grows even harder. The members of the FPA are good experienced people who serve the community with pride and honor. Every day we strap on our armor or put on our headset, we put aside how we're feeling and what's going on in our lives to serve the members of this community and put their priorities first. One of the best things we have going for us right now is our culture. We have leadership that encourages personal growth and leadership that values us. However, in today's world, that can only carry us so far. In increasingly stressed economy and strained labor market, opportunities are out there for our members to seek better financial opportunities with, and with their experience, it would be an absolute score for another organization. Currently, we are down several positions and are working countless hours of overtime. It has an unmeasurable toll on the home life of our members. Oftentimes we have to choose between going to one of our children's events or making dirty shifts is working short. Most times it's the latter. We sacrifice our family for the greater good of the community. And because of that sacrifice, the public doesn't have to wait tens of minutes for an officer to arrive or even hours. But you do enjoy probably what is one of the quickest response times in the county. Remember, but we're beginning to reach an ignition point of a fuse that once lit, we cannot stop. If we continue to lose officers at the rate without being able to fill up positions quickly, people will burn out and go somewhere where they can work less hours uh, for the same financial benefit. Every member of this association has different wants and needs. So I'm not saying this proposal will stop everyone from leaving, but it gives the FPA and the city a exciting chance. The only way we're going to be able to match the attrition rate is to attract laterals. When you consider someone who's fresh out of the academy and the amount of time and personnel work it takes to get them out on a solo officer status versus hiring someone with experience, the number is staggering. We have leadership in place that draws people. We have good, we have a good, well-rounded staff that people want to work with. And now we have an opportunity to take a step in the right direction to close the financial gap that we've struggled, struggled with for so long. During our negotiation meetings, I acknowledge the thoughts of financial uncertainty for the city with the projections and the fact that proposal is, looks uncomfortable. However, one of uh, negotiations members, Dennis Stevens uh, said that we, the FPA are uncomfortable right now. With the amount of hours we work, the projection of possibly losing two more in the next couple of months, our light at the end of the tunnel is fading. We've been doing this for so long now, we're running on fumes. This proposal gives us the fuel to keep going in hopes that we will make it out of the tunnel of darkness in one piece. This proposal requires a little bit of faith on both sides. The FPA has faith that the council will see our struggles and do what they can to help ease the burden. And our hope is that the council has faith in the FPA, faith that we see you're putting your best foot forward, even in times of economic uncertainty. Um, if any of you guys ever have any questions, you can feel free to contact me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Justin. All right, with that, I don't see any other hands. So did we have a motion to adjourn? We already did, right?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Everybody, aye. Okay. All right, Buffy, now do your magic for us, please.
Okay, let me get Mary on there.
Thanks.